Okay, we all, I think we'll get started. This is a school board study session. Thank you all for coming. Audience. Dr. Stallow.
Our purpose always in coming together for study sessions is so that we can have a free flow of conversation and study issues that will later then oftentimes have action at the board table. Tonight, we have some of our continuous improvement planning with board agenda items, as well as the operational three-year plan. We'll get an update on our enrollment and budget from Julie. And Jim and Marine will share a facilities and construction update. And then we do want to give the board an opportunity to learn a little bit more about some of the work we've been doing on our reunification process. And then some policies that we'll review. And then the board community engagement committee has a report that they'll be sharing with us.
Okay, so we'll move on to the agenda. Every year, we look at our working document, the agenda for 2019-20. This is a draft document that's in your packet. And just going through some updates, the change in the number, policy numbers we'll be doing. The one-hundreds now, the two-hundreds in October, and then four-hundreds February to June. Otherwise, that part is pretty much the same. Operational oversight, the focus on personalized learning, social emotional learning, cultural responsive teaching strategies. I could go through all of them. I think you've read them all. District audit of social emotional learning resources. And then I had some conversation with Dr. Stallow about the retreat, the data retreat in September. I think that's September 23rd. Is that correct? And I feel it might be a good time for us at that time to do an update review of Ola de Lago and the Sage Academy, as well as maybe touch a little bit on equity and social emotional learning and the supports for our students. That seems to best fit during that retreat. So if the board is okay with that, that's what we'll direct the administration to do.
I have a question.
Sure.
Will there be any outside leadership overseeing that retreat?
I'm not aware of any.
Outside, the retreat?
No, for our World's Best Workforce and data retreat, we'll have Jeff and Kevin and Chris Lynn in-house doing that.
Okay.
Did you say Monday, the 23rd?
Yep, that's our next work session.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, it would be our next work session. But we have a board meeting in between. Again, the budget and budget process. And here, I think we want to talk about what the board priorities are and impact of those decisions that we make as to what happens to our budget. And I think Julie will go into more detail on that as we go forward. Then I did receive the results on the board self-evaluation. And I think I mentioned that they were impressed at how quickly we got all the responses back. And I'd left a copy of that report is in your mailboxes. I'm going to check your mailboxes before I leave tonight. It's a baseline. It doesn't give us a lot of information, but I guess I'd be looking to the board to see if we want to have some future discussion on it. They could give me a couple guidelines that we could use for discussion if we want to do that. Otherwise, we can consider it a baseline and we'll do it again next year. We'd have a comparison then, and we could actually, if we choose to, we could have MSBA come and help go through the process. So if you want to give that a little thought, get back to me what your thoughts are about the direction we want to do with that for future discussion. And as was mentioned, public engagement. Had a meeting, so there's a report a little bit later on about that. Otherwise, most of the things are kind of status quo that we always do. We have a attendance boundary process on here. I'm not sure what that, if we still need that on here or not. Process is done. If it's just a monitor, I'm not sure. Yeah, well, it's the last one. Yeah. I'm not, I think it's, did you take it off? Okay, I'm going to have an older copy. Okay. Did anyone have anything else they wanted to talk about with the draft copy?
I just wanted to make an edit that we'll make sure that we make in the policy review. We won't get through all of the two-hundreds in October, so we'll make sure that that says an October to December or whatever that looks like. So I'll make, we'll make sure we make that change. Maybe you'll get through them all in October, then that's okay.
The only question that I have on the strategic plan and the way we've done it before is the E to E-12 plans that we usually get at the end of the year because our curriculum meetings don't start until, what, October, I think? Is there a, I noticed this last year, and I think I noticed it the year before, do we have an introduction from curriculum on what's planned for the year so we have the end of the year be the culmination? Because I think last year, we got like intermediate stuff and then we got a culmination at the end of the year. Do we have like an introduction to that for the year?
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking for. You mean in this, in this document?
In our plan, so in our plan, every year, we have the comprehensive E-12 curriculum, all that kind of stuff. And which is great. We do that every year. We have a separate curriculum meeting. But it seems like our, the meeting, you know, where it says what we've done this year happens at the end of the year. Do we have an introduction of that in the beginning of the year planned so that we know what's being worked on as we're getting our periodic updates?
Yeah, we would have that. I know the first, the meetings are coming up in November, December.
Oh, no, but I thought, okay, it's even later.
So then they, so as, so our work this year is going to be on personalized learning, MTSSS, all of the things that are under 1A.
So this is all operational oversight?
Yep, and so, so that's the large, that's the lion's share of the work. Probably the logistical components that are important in November and December is that if there's anything for new courses or things that are going to be put out there for student registration, that those come in November, December, in terms of getting in the registration guide because that goes out in January for registration the following year. But at all of those meetings should be updates around personalized learning or equity, sometimes program, program updates, things like that. So, but the, the work of the year is largely under that 1A strategic direction.
Do we have, I understand that we're not going to, you know, get the new class offering and stuff like that now. But do we have a strategic plan going into this academic year that we can get a, kind of like a preamble on and then have it obviously culminated at the end of the year? So like in the middle of last year, we learned about MTSSS and stuff like that with, I assume that was planned all the way back in September, otherwise we wouldn't have the resources for it.
So what are you looking for? Help me to?
A strategic plan for the year now that I know they're going to be working on before we start our committee meetings in November, which are the action items associated with them.
I'll, we'll put together an overview. It will be very similar to what's listed as the district goals under that increasing measurable student achievement strategic direction.
Okay. Thanks, I'm just trying to get a game plan.
Yep, there's a plan, for sure.
You know what, I think that will be, I actually think that's helpful to have because we're, that's the business we're in, right? We're educating, we need, we're talking about the curriculum. So I think that's helpful if we have, if we have that big picture objective at the beginning of the year, we know where we're headed, and we're reviewing it at the end of the year.
But you, so I just, I want to be sure that we deliver on what's asked because to me, to me, we're talking about the district goals and the priority work, which the board approved in
Is already.
In July, which is our plan.
Yeah.
Right. And then we have groups that are working on that.
So maybe it's just timing of what we're thinking.
Well, you're not asking for like specific curriculum that we're teaching the kids? That's not what you mean?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
The stuff that's in this is extremely high level.
Right.
And I'm sure that, that the curriculum group has, and who's head of curriculum has already developed what they're going to be focusing on this year. And I'm just looking for that high-level strategic plan that we normally see culminated at the end of the year, and I'm just looking for the tie-in. I'm looking for the, you know.
And that's not part of the green and purple work?
It is all of them.
It is part of, it is part of it. It's just that it's really high level here. And I, the first curriculum meeting, I thought was the end of October, I guess it's November. But that's still a long time to start talking about curriculum in general, so I was just, and it is like, like Jonathan said, one of our key areas. I just would like to see if we could get just a, just a high-level overview of what we're planning.
I'm not opposed, I'm just trying to get an understanding of what you're asking for. Because by November, you're looking at curriculum for the following year.
Right.
So we're already into it.
But there's things planned for this year, I'm just wondering because, you know.
We can put a note together, and we'll send that out to all board members in our curriculum advisory group.
Okay, any other comments on the 1920 agenda and working document draft? If not, we'll move into the three-year board agenda that also is a draft. Pretty much everything for 1920, we've gone over. There's a lot of similarities across the next three years. We'll be looking, pretty much all of the, operational oversight is the same. Board governance, we'll be looking at onboarding potential new board members. Superintendent relations, Dr. Stallow's contract will be coming up. Public engagement is pretty much the same. That's it. So does anyone see anything long-term that they'd like added or don't feel is appropriate? Okay. Then we'll move on to the three-year operational plan and priority work.
Excellent, thank you. You know, I, I think that one of the things I'm really excited about this year is some of the work that, that we've maintained really probably since, since I started building some of those systems and operationalizing work of AGR and learning teams, some of those, it's continued to show up on some of our district priority work. My belief is that something isn't operational unless, you know, I could grab any five staff members across the district and they would have similar responses to what do we mean by this work? I really believe that this is a instrumental year for us to merge and then maybe be at a point where we can take it off the plan because it really is operational. So you'll see that as you look at the three years out. There were a couple of things that have dropped off in the next couple of years. Some of them, you know, if we're in a position where, you know, for the, for example, the social and emotional audit today, or this year really, we are in a year of auditing and learning and developing a plan, which then moves into implementation in the following year, into monitoring in the year after that. So that's kind of that three-year trend oftentimes, a year of development, a year of implementation, and a year of monitoring. So that's kind of how we've always done this. And again, the detail of the first year of a three-year plan is far greater and then looking forward. I really, and, you know, I'm always cautious to say this, but as I look at the work that we're doing as a district, I, and I'm not saying there won't be other work that emerges, but I really feel like, like we've got some huge work in front of us that's going to take us some years. You know, as we've looked at the personalized learning framework, now that's not just a one-year kind of thing. That's going to take us multiple years of supporting staff and supporting kids. The same thing as we're revising and looking at the results of the MTSSS audits, you know, that's going to be something that we're going to continue to monitor and pay attention to. So I feel like, you know, our plan really does encompass the big chunks of work, and some of them will continue to stay on as we continue to make gains in student achievement, student engagement, and operational excellence.
Any questions? Okay. Then we'll move into oversight of operations, district budget, and enrollment.
So I wanted to talk a little bit about audit to start off with. Our audit, we did have auditors here at the end of, in the middle of August, I should say. Our audit is mainly complete at this point as far as the fragmental piece of it. It came out very positive. We're about $350,000 above what we had projected for unassigned fund balance. So it's a slightly higher number. We do have some money in some restricted funds that we didn't spend this year, such as capital and long-term facility maintenance. As we're working through these construction projects, that money will get spent over these years, it's just when it gets spent. And so you'll see some carryover in those areas, but as far as the unassigned fund balance, that did increase a slight amount of money. I think it's a fraction of a percent as far as our total budget, but it is up slightly over what we had projected. So that came out really well. At the September meeting, the second meeting in September, representatives from Clifton, Larson, Allen will be here to go over the preliminary budget, and then they'll present at the final budget at the October meeting. So for that piece of it, if you have any questions about the audit, but in the most part, that's where that landed.
You mean they'll present the preliminary audit?
Excuse me?
Did you say budget or audit?
Preliminary audit.
Okay.
For last year.
Yeah.
So as we start talking about enrollment for this year, I know that at the last meeting, I wasn't here, but the board talked a little bit, and they know that our numbers aren't coming in quite where they, we thought they would this year. We are, we're up about 150 students. So overall, the district still is a growing district, we're up about 150 students, but I think we're probably short somewhere between 80 and 100 students right now. School is starting for the high school, they're up about 23. However, as you know, through this month of September until also October, when numbers come in, they have a tendency to lose some kids because they've moved and haven't told us. And so I expect that those numbers will probably come in pretty even to where they were last year. And we kind of, we expected that. Where we thought we would get more students is at the elementary level, and we're about 80, 75 kids short there. Half of those kids or more than half of those students are kindergarten students. Our kindergarten is short about, like I said, 35 to 40 kids, and that, we're hearing some things as to why. Some of it, we are hearing that people are holding their kindergarten student back because of the change in boundaries. And so if they were a summer birthday or even close to a summer birthday, they're definitely holding them back so that they start school at the school that they're going to be at. We've heard that. I don't have any solid evidence of what, you know, how many of those 40, it could be that we just have a smaller class size this year. It could be a combination of all of that. The rest of it, we've been looking into the whys of why is our enrollment down a little bit? I mean, even though, I shouldn't say our enrollment is down, our enrollment, we're still growing, it's just not to the extent that we thought it was going to be. So in the, in the past, you know, our district is a second time, usually second time home buyer district where our houses are a little bit on the higher side, so parents are moving in at those upper levels. We definitely are seeing growth at our middle school. And so that typically is when parents will move their children, is in that fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade. So we're seeing growth that in those grade levels, so we continue to see that. I think you remember about three years ago, we did have a senior living building that was built here in Prior Lake. That opened up quite a bit of our lower housing, priced houses in the district, so that $2 to $400,000 range. So we saw a lot of young families moving in at that time. And we're doing some investigating to see what that turnover has been in that, in that home price range for this year. I think it's not as high as it has been in the past in that price range where we would see more of that elementary level moving into the district. So I think it's a combination of a lot of different things. We are, like I said, we're investigating that, we're looking into why the growth isn't as high as we expected, but we're still a growing district. And so some, some thoughts about how has that affected our budget for this year? So to think about, you know, that three-year budget process, you know, right now, we're in the middle of looking at the levy certification for FY '21. So we're in 2019, we're actually looking for another year out for our levy certification. So last year, when the board approved the levy certification, we anticipated about 250 kids. So our levy is based on that for this current year. So that portion of the levy gets adjusted in the next year. So this is a two-year that we'll have to look at how this affects our budget. So state aid will be immediate. We won't see about $780,000 of state aid if it's, if it's 100 kids. So I'm rounding a little bit, but about $780,000 in the current year. And that levy adjustment will be on the next levy, and we'll adjust those numbers, so you'll see that, so they'll do a levy adjustment. And so that'll be about another $160,000. So that's revenue that we won't see in the district. Just so that you know, as we look at our students and our growth, and as we go through that process, we also look at our hiring process. So I, you recall last year when you approved the budget for the current year, we said we'd hire 8.7 FTE of teaching staff. We've hired two. So we haven't spent or about $420,000, $20,000 of expenditures that we thought we would. So even though we're not getting the revenue, about 780, we also did spend about 420, so that difference is about $300,000 for this year. So we actually did a little bit better last year of our fund balance, so about $350,000. We're short about that for this next year, so those are going to probably end up being similar to where we were. But as we manage that budget, we look at that growth, and if we're not seeing it, we're also not hiring staff, and we're not doing some of those other things until we actually see those students come in. So it's, you know, not such a big impact to our budget as people may think if we don't have those 100 students as we move forward. Any questions about that?
Julie, can we have updated enrollment numbers?
I do. I can show you them.
Because I know that the ones we got in August were preliminary.
And so are these. The number shows about 90 right now. One of the areas that we're short, the other area is the ALC. But we typically will see those students come in these next two weeks. School started, but you'll see that they're trickling in, and I would expect that we're going to gain about 20 kids there. We're at 72 right now, but I would see them coming up to about 92 to 100 in the next couple of weeks. So we're seeing, or I'm talking to Mr. Brown, and he's telling us that he has parents coming in all the time here and students, and they're registering. And so we are seeing those numbers coming in, even though school has started. That's kind of the norm for the students.
She didn't clarify, Julie, that 90 you were referencing?
Yeah, the total overall 90 is the total number that we're not, haven't seen come into the district.
Versus projected.
Versus projected.
Right.
So about 160 students.
Increase overall.
Increase in about 90 that we're still waiting on. So if you want to see those numbers, I can pull them up on the board.
Yeah, I was looking for a chart like this one that you did before by grade level, so we can see.
I can show you that.
Yeah.
I do have it as a.
This was always helpful reference.
You can see by grade, I can pull it up here on.
Julie, want to talk which graph that you've been asked to pull up so that the rest of the board knows?
I'm going to pull up the 18, 19 by school. That, I think you saw something similar. Maybe I need to.
I think you need to lock in, that's how they do it. I was looking for the.
Do you have current numbers?
Or as of yesterday?
Yesterday, okay.
Julie, maybe you can answer this while you are finding that. The, typically, the late August, beginning of September additions to, at the ALC, those are students normally were not already expected at the high school?
Right.
Generally.
They're coming from other places.
Coming from somewhere.
They could be, they could be transferring from our high school. It could be some of both.
Just trying to get a handle on.
Kids that have dropped out, coming back.
Sure.
So it could be a lot of different reasons.
Just trying to get a handle if we expect those to be new additions or some of them swaps.
Typically, as you know, a lot of the, ALC has a different requirement for open enrollment too, and so you'll see that. So we kind of have a running total of these numbers, so you can see kind of if you want. I can send you this. This is our Google document. You can kind of see where we're at by each school. So here's Edgewood, we're at 408 there, Five Oaks. So our schools, and I'd have to ask for sure if you have updated. Oh, I'll scroll down if you want to see this, but I usually just go to the bottom here. And you can see, here's what the budget, we budgeted for. So we have almost 600 students here. We budgeted 535, so it's about 40 kids there that we're short at the kindergarten. And here's by each grade. So overall, we're 74 students short of what we budgeted for in that, at that level. In the middle school, here's Twin Oaks and Hidden Oaks. We're 40 students short of what we budgeted, 39 I should say. And at the high school, we're up 23. This number is low, lower than it has been in the past, and I just expect that that will go up here as we start school. And typically, we've seen that increase. So overall, that number is short maybe right now.
So this is very helpful. The chart that I was referring to is by grade level, so we can see how many students are in each grade by school, and then how many are open enrolled as well.
I have a total open enrolled. I don't have it by grade, I just have a total open enrolled down here across the district, and that includes early childhood through, and ALC as well.
So this was from October 2016, and I haven't seen an update since then, and it was by grade at each school, and how many were open enrolled at each school, at each grade, and it was helpful to be able to see that.
I can, I can run that too if that's what you'd like to see. These are all, like I said, preliminary numbers. You probably got it October 1 because we had actual numbers, October 1 numbers. And so you would see that I would typically give you those beginning of year numbers. As you know, October 1 numbers are what we actually get financed on for the year from the Department of Education. And so when we submit that October 1, that's when they start paying us our money, and it's based on those numbers. This open enrolled number usually is high right now, and then we, when school starts and we find out that parents have moved into the district or, but until we get all that paperwork finalized, that's the number that we have right now.
And you said it does include the ALC?
These numbers include
Which is a different.
Early childhood and ALCs.
Different guidelines for that.
Yep. And you can see our early childhood special ed number right above that is 145 students. The budget is 68, but as you know, many of those students are just part-time in our district, so it takes a lot more students to add up to 1 ADM or average daily membership.
Mary? Julie, I've got a question. In the numbers that you sent us, and I can't tell from this right away, in August, earlier, we were short, we were down, I think almost 30 kids at third grade, too. Did that change since the beginning of the year?
So this is third grade right here.
And 684, and then you had.
It's what I, so it's based on the best projection that I can have at the time for, you know, weighted and what we usually see in growth. So it's not that we're down, it's just that we didn't grow as much as I expected us to. If that makes some sense. So it's not like we lost students there, it's just that we didn't grow as much as I would have expected at those grade levels. And it kind of, it's like I talked about with kindergarten, same there. We have 600, almost 600 students, we just didn't grow as much as I thought we would get to 635. Last year, our kindergarten was at 635. So we've added 12 students at first grade.
So you could send updated documents to all board members of these numbers?
Sure, sure. If they want to see a copy of this, this is something that we have updated. Can see we update it quite often, right? You know, these are our latest.
And again, per, per school with open enrollment, it was right next to it, like we had two years ago, that would be very helpful.
And do you want that now, or do you want that as a total?
Maybe more accurate later.
Yeah, I guess. But I can. But I can send this out as it is now to you. You can have a copy of this if you would like.
If you hope so, if you could.
It'd be interesting, but it'd be more helpful at the end of that first week of school.
And I believe you've got the eight fifteen version of this.
Yeah.
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 Okay. And Jeff, how does it work? Like there's a tagging or something like that goes at the end of the first week of school? Or there's a count and then you continue counting? Or how does, how do you get that final number in October? Do you just go to teacher schools? How does, how does that come in?
A tagging?
Well, there is something about, I remember asking this report about how the actual count gets finalized before October.
So that's all run through Julie's office for, through Mars reporting?
Okay.
So secretaries, and you can speak to that. Secretaries, you know, we, all the students are accurately enrolled. There's our centralized enrollment. And when they're at the building, secretaries are verifying their attendance.
That's.
As are teachers. And so that's always updated for sure on October first. But then, how many times during the course of the year too?
Monthly, we are reporting to the department.
Yeah. So that's a constant.
Right.
Online relationship for the amount of enrollment and students within our district and leaving our district.
And we're still finalizing last year's enrollment? So as you know, as we go through enrollment for last year, we can report what we have, but if our students are attending somewhere else, we have to reconcile all of that. So we're still waiting maybe for another district to finish reconciling their enrollment or something. So that continues all the way through December for last year. And those final, final numbers don't come out until like at the beginning of next year. So when we're doing our audit for this year, we're basing that off of a July or an August number from that. And that can vary a little bit until it gets to the very end. Then for the most part, they're final, they're close to final numbers, but it's still getting varied until the end of December.
So does the board want these current, these documents? Or do you wanna wait a week when school starts and get maybe more accurate numbers? Then it's important to get right away.
Yeah.
Yeah. So can we wait until the first week of school starts?
Well, I can bring you one to the September board work session and give you that September and nine.
The meeting.
Regularly.
Meeting.
I can send it out or I can include it as part of the board packet.
If you could include it in the board packet, then we have it earlier.
Sure. Yep.
I can do that.
Okay.
That actually works better.
I just think it's just always a good reminder for us that as we're looking at numbers and looking at especially the open enrollment in, that we also remember that there's, and I'm not even gonna say the number because I don't know the number, but we, you know, that's not the net gain. We have seven hundred and, or whatever.
Seven hundred and forty last year, or right around that.
So I just think it's always important when we're talking about open enrolled students that we have to remember that we have a lot of resident students who choose, who choose to go elsewhere as well.
When we talk about open enrollment, I can remember also that includes charter schools. So that's another public school that they would attend. It does not include public, uh, private schools. So when you see an open enrolled, uh, the number of open enrolled students we have out, that only includes student that, students that are attending another public school or charter school. It doesn't include the two or three hundred kids that we have in our district that attend a private school. So, and we don't get any funding for those students at all. And no, and no district does. The only funding that we get for those students is for the transportation that we have for non-public schools.
Any other questions on enrollment? Did you have more?
Yes, I do. As we start talking about the levy certification for next year. In fact, I'll go back over here. I just wanna remind you that that's coming up at the end of September, the levy certification. Let me see if I can maybe, I suppose I have to. I just wanna talk a little bit about and show you. Um, this is kind of what it looks like. We talk about three years again. When I talk about, we certify our levy now in two thousand and nineteen. So the board approves the preliminary levy. And then the taxpayers pay that in May and October of nine, of two thousand and, or twenty twenty. And we recognize that revenue, even though it's paid in May and October, we don't recognize that revenue until the twenty twenty-one school year. So we're certifying it now, actually for the twenty twenty-one school year. And so that's why all of those enrollments numbers need to be, we updated them to be, um, to more closely relate to where we're at right now. So we'll see. Because we've already levied for this year for those enrollments, we levied for two hundred and fifty additional students. If we only see another hundred and sixty, we'll see an adjustment, a negative levy adjustment on this next levy certification to offset for that difference.
So basically, if I can summarize, if we, we vote in December to finalize the levy and January first, people begin being assessed, but they pay it in their normal, uh, property tax bills that has been accumulated into their twenty twenty filing in April, right? And that's why we get paid in twenty twenty-one. But if we, if we vote for it in December twenty nineteen, what they pay in May of twenty twenty on their installment actually includes from January to May, right?
Right.
Okay.
So the county assesses, assesses all the properties and spreads that. Whatever the board approves as the final certification in December, that gets spread across all the taxpayers based on that enrollment that we have at the time and based on any levies that are required from the state. So when we, I, I just, when we're short this, and I say we're short about a hundred, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand in revenue, there's another hundred and sixty thousand that's in levy. But we're not gonna see that this year, that, that reduction. You're going to see it in the following year. So this has an effect over two years when we're a little bit short. But if we had more students than we anticipated, and that's happened in the past, we see the additional revenue come in the following year. So it's a, it's that process, and that's why it's a little interest, you know, it's just how school districts receive their funds. It's, it's not clear and cut and dried like you'd like it to be. And it's always based on enrollment and when that actually happens and what actually happens. Because we're, we're estimating right now what our enrollment's going to be for the next three years. And that's what that levy's based on. It's a little more complicated than I'd like it to be, in other words. Any other questions? So you'll see that preliminary levy come, um, we'll be talking about it. And the final levy should, um, in September, the board has to approve a preliminary levy by September thirtieth. That's all I have.
That's it? Okay.
Then move on to facilities, planning and construction. Just to update, um, four of us went on the tour today. And it was amazing, the amount of work that's happened and what's been done over the summer. And my understanding, my understanding is it's been a lot of seven days a week types of things going on. So, um, it was really exciting to see. And I can see that now there's a possibility that some of these places will open. For a while, I wasn't so sure, but they kept saying, it'll work, it'll work. But I'll turn it over to Jim and Maureen.
Thank you. We do have good news. High school, we had a building official through. We had a few things to clean up. We'll have, we'll be ready for tomorrow. So that one opens. And we have occupancy for ALC, so that one opens. We are working through occupancy at the other sites. And again, a few minor things here and there and a lot of cleanup. There's some work to be done, but I'm confident we'll be ready there as well.
You got it.
Well, I know we talked to some teachers today when we were on the tour. Their, their rooms looked like a hurricane. And they were very calm and just said, yep, we'll be ready on the first day of school. And they're elementary teachers, but it's like, wow, you gotta, less than a week maybe to really have everything organized. So they're all working hard and it's awesome. Thank them very much for all the work.
Yep. And I can't thank the staff and sites enough for allowing us to do the work we need to do. And it's, and Maureen and our staff that worked long hours. And it's, it's paying off. It's, um, ALC is a showplace, I think. And, um, high school's coming around. It's, it's good. So thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the standard reunification method.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Do you have a drive or do you want?
I'll drive. Well, I was gonna get another chair for our presenter.
Maureen and Joan Heisey will come up to join us.
Jeff, there's one more.
Oh.
We have one more here.
All right, we got one right over there. You can split the difference, Dan.
Okay.
Girls on this side.
Somehow during the presentation, we'll see if we can reunify.
There we go.
Make sure you're going out separate doors.
So tonight, we wanted a chance to update you on work that we've engaged, just our ongoing work around community crisis and, and emergency systems. As you know, last April, we did a tabletop exercise. We meet annual, we annually with our community crisis response team. And we did a tabletop, uh, exercise on reunification. And through that process with our, um, with our community partners, we realized some areas for improvement for us. So we've had a team that has done some amazing work, um, throughout really the summer into the fall right now. Maureen and Joan have been leading that work. Dan, along with John Vizik and Jennifer Muller, Kristy Musman and Jeff have all worked on that and really have done some, some, um, really amazing work with the support of Joel McCall. He recently retired from the Savage, the Savage Fire Chief. And he has been an amazing support to us through this process. So we just wanted to update you a little bit on some of the work that we've been doing as we will be deploying and sharing, um, this information with staff and families in the coming months. Thank you. So just some photos. As part of the work, all administrators last summer completed the FEMA training, incident command courses one hundred, two hundred and seven hundred. All administrators also participated in a four-hour standard reunification method training and tabletop exercises with many of our, you can see our local partners, um, on some of these pictures as well. In addition to that, we've got approximately thirty-five DSC staff that have completed the FEMA one hundred course series and have also received some training. They, um, really have become the core, and we'll talk about it a little bit more, core team that would be deployed should we need a reunification site to, to occur. The next slide just showcases, I wanted to be sure that, um, you know, one of the things that we talked about during the strategic planning process as we looked at those strategic directions is really that fifth one, which became that new strategic direction. And we had a lot of conversation with our community stakeholders about, um, the safe, secure and supportive environment that nurtures the social and emotional well-being of all learners. And as we look at that strategic direction, we really look at the physical safety of our students. That's where some of our work around crisis management are locked in with options. And certainly this work on parent reunification lands. And then also the social and emotional, um, work that we're doing with our students as well. So that strategic direction, there's two really powerful pieces to that. And that's where the work sits. So with that, like I said, I, a huge thank you to Maureen Mullen and to Joan Heisey for just embracing the urgency around this work and, and helping keep us organized and focused and connected to our community partners.
So if that matters, I'll hand it over to the team here.
So, um, Dr. Salo was talking about our, the training that we did this spring. And that actually came out of, or excuse me, this summer, our, uh, our annual, um, community crisis, um, meeting that we did last spring, where some of the feedback that we got, both from our staff and from our partners, was that we did need to do this incident command training. And we did need to look at reunification because an incident is over very quickly, whether it's, um, that we have to leave a building because of a gas leak or if there's a violent event. But the reunification process can go on for a long time, and we needed some work around that. So that is, that is where we landed. We did, um, we had direction from Dr. Salo to research that and which that led us to an organization out of Colorado called the I Love You Guys Foundation, which has developed a, a response protocol that is used by over twenty-six thousand schools and in eleven countries and is endorsed by law enforcement and emergency responders. And that is the protocol that we have adopted and that we are, are developing. So, um, we went out to the training sponsored by this organization. And from that, um, we are developing our plan, so.
And I think we, as Dr. Salo pointed out and Maureen pointed out, we had a team of people that had this opportunity in July to go and be a part of this I Love You Guys Summit. And I think we all were impacted greatly at that experience. We had, it was a three-day conference and we had very impactful speakers from a number of crises that have happened over the years across the, the country. And I think we all came back with a real sense of urgency around coming together. Shortly after our return in mid-July, we got together and we created this mission statement. Because as Maureen pointed out, we know that recovery starts when the incident begins. And there are all sorts of components to it. And one of the keys to that is making all of our, as Dr. Salo pointed out in our strategic plan, everybody feel as though we have plans and we are safe. And we will take care at, at the core of what we do. Safety and security is of utmost importance each and every day. But that we're prepared for things that are unplanned and that we can reunite, as this is all about, the reunification. And we're gonna talk more about the specifics around that. But that parents trust us each and every day, our students trust us each and every day, that we're gonna take good care of them and, and we're gonna take good care of them every day, regardless of what's going on. And that's what this is all about.
So reunification, the reason for parent-student reunification occurs when something extraordinary has happened in their district. We need to formally reunite parents back with their families. And sometimes this happens outside of this normal school that the student would attend. Having a predetermined and practiced reunification method ensures that a reunification process will not further complicate, it's probably already a high stress and emotional situation. And so hopefully, in fact, by putting something like this together, it'll, um, cause, you know, a more orderly plan to have in place and hopefully diffuse emotions during a high stress situation. So as Dr. Salo, I think we've all mentioned, so FEMA, um, the courses that we took online, the one hundred, two hundred and seven hundred, and then some of our staff took the one hundred. Part of that is called POST. It's a FEMA, it's kind of gives us as a framework or guideline to establish. POST stands for priorities, objectives, strategy and tactics. And that kind of helps us define what the reunification process will look like. And so priorities, the first one obviously is student, staff, safety and well-being. Student, staff location and condition, and then identifying missing students or staff. And then the O for objectives. Account.
You got control.
This is kinda backwards.
Someone say I'm in my right spot.
Yeah, she got me out there now. So objectives, accounting for every student, accounting for every staff member. And then every student that can be reunified with their parent or guardian is reunified. And then the strategy, how do we accomplish that? And that's by our standard reunification method. And then tactics, of course, will be dictated by the environment and the event that's occurred. And then as far as more details on the standard reunification method, Maureen will go into more details too, as far as the how.
Yep, absolutely. So one of the really important pieces, um, that, and it says it in our mission, mission statement, is to have accountable reunification, which means we have to make sure that we get the right student with the right parent or guardian. Couple of different tools for doing that. And one specific tool, and I'm gonna pass these around, are reunification cards. These are, um, part of a go-kit, which is, um, will be at the sites, a reunification site. So they're, they're both a tool that we use for identification. So the parents will fill these out. And they're also a tool for the parents to, so they have something in their hand to read that describes the process that they'll go through. So they, they, on one hand, are giving us the information we need to identify our parents and put them with the right student or parents or guardians. And on the backside, it tells those people what's gonna happen, what they can expect and how this is gonna work. So it is, it is explaining right there in their hands as they arrive at the reunification site, um, what this is. It also gives us a, a tool to track those folks. So, our next slide. This is another piece of this method developed by the I Love You Guys Foundation is how to set up a reunification site. And we are looking at, um, our sites to set these up. So let me explain basically how this works. So we have the impacted site and we have the reunification site. So for example, there's a gas leak at Redtail Ridge. Everybody has to be evacuated. They can't go back in that building. They have to go somewhere else to meet up with their, um, their parent or guardian. So our bus company picks them up and brings them to a location, drops them off where they can assemble. Our parents are communicated to through our texts and our emails and the phone calls, and they arrive to a different location on the far side. So one of the important pieces is that parents and children should arrive at different locations, so they're out of the line of sights. So the parents or guardians come to that site, they're, they come to the check-in area, they're given those cards, they fill out the cards, and they are, as the parent, excuse me, the students are arriving, they are assembled in this area by class or by, or by alphabetized, depending on the grade level. We also, at our sites, are identifying different areas where if, if there is an incident that needs some law enforcement interviews, if there needs some crisis counseling, that can happen. So we're looking at our sites for reunification and setting them up this way. Once the parents are checked in and ID'd, once the students are assembled and accounted for, then there are staff members on our rapid-response teams that will get the identification card from the parent, go to the student area with that card, and bring the student back so that they can bring them together, and then they can leave the site. So it's a, it's a really thoughtfully planned method for reunification. It works, it's used in many, many districts, it has been proven to work. So we are identifying our sites that we can use for this and those different areas for law enforcement, student assembly, that sort of thing, at those sites. And working with the principals and the staff to train them. So a second part to this is, to the reunification plan, is assembling these rapid-response teams. So we'll need to have two teams, one to go to the impacted site to help with the transport, to help with the evacuation, the other will go to the reunification site to get ready for the students coming and for the parents coming. So we have already identified these staff, we've begun training these staff on these, on their, on their different responsibilities. The third part of this is assembling, we're calling our go-kits. This is something, another piece that was developed by the I Love You Guys Foundation as part of this reunification plan, and it has a few different things in it. It has the parent identification cards in it, it has badges that say, I'm a greeter, I'm a reunifier, so that people can, our teams will go to the site, they'll get their badge, they'll get their cards. And on the backside of that badge, it has just kind of one, two, three lists of their primary responsibilities. So we will have leaders who can train people at the site on our team, but people can also, other people can come to the site who haven't had extensive training and can be very helpful in that. So we have those, that's part of the go-kit. The other part of the go-kit are really practical things like caution tape and red vests, you know, reflective vests and.
Megaphone.
Megaphone, yeah, that sort of thing. So things that you need for large groups of people. So the communications team, Kristi, has led up assembling these kits along with some other larger items like sandwich boards that say, you know, parent parking this way, you know, that sort of thing. So it's been a really large effort, much multifaceted. Many team members really contributing a lot to bringing this method together. Let's see, it's site staging, go-kits, rapid-response teams.
Well, you'll notice, I hear you'll see law enforcement, that's what the LE stands for. And when Maureen and I were first trying to pick a few sites and start identifying some of the spaces and just trying to think of how would we have enough staff to go to these sites, and it seemed a little daunting, just the district responding to something like this. And that's when Joel McCall, retired savage firefighter, was in the room with us. And he kind of looked at us like, you think this is all just you guys? He said, you know, one phone call, then I'm going to have eighty volunteer firefighters here. We can act as greeters, we can be your reunifiers, you're not in this alone. Well, through our training last week, was it now, two weeks ago? We had Scott County Emergency Management Systems here. Shakka, Minutawakka, and Sioux sent their emergency response team to us. Again, Savage Fire, Savage Police, Prairie Lake Fire, Prairie Lake Police. And the wealth of resources and knowledge in that room, they, I think within that group, about three phone calls, we could have had sixty ambulances, numerous, again, volunteer firefighters and police officers assisting Scott County. And then these guys and gals, not just locally trained, but the Scott County Emergency Management Team were called up. They actually got called up for national emergencies as well, they got called up to Hurricane Katrina. So that's why the Incident Command, I know some of our administrators, why aren't we taking these online courses? But it just gives us the credibility, because then we'll all be speaking the same common terminology. Talk about Incident Commander, or Planning Coordinator, or Logistics Operator, or Tactical Operations. All of us speaking the same common terminology just earns us some credibility when they come in to assist us with these situations.
Also, the, the rapid-response teams are set up with the Incident Command format. So those teams have an Incident Commander and so on down the strata. So that we, when we do interface with our emergency responders, we are interfacing really effectively.
Can we just speak to communications a little bit? Sure. So for this slide, we, one of the, some of the key messages are stay home, stay informed, be ready. And we, we know realistically, parents aren't going to stay home, well, be prepared for that. But we do want to make sure that we're giving our emergency responders every opportunity to address the emergency at hand. So that, that's one of our messages. This was also the framework we used in our district video that we just wrapped up shooting for last week and should be ready about mid-September. So we'll be showing that to all parents, staff, as well as students, so that they get an idea of what it looks like, so you get a visual. So people kind of have an idea of what they can expect if something were to occur. So we'll show that with all of you, board members as well, when that's ready.
Will you take the next one too, Stacy?
It's a perfect segue. So these are all the ways we communicate in any kind of emergency and even non-emergencies. So that, of course, will be the way we continue to communicate with our families if something were to happen. We also have a, a letter drafted for principals to share with families at the beginning of the year so that they know what our plan is, so that they'll, you know, we know that in an emergency, they're not going to maybe remember everything, but we want to make sure that parents know that we have a plan early on, and then that video will reinforce the information as well.
So we're looking at, at this reunification method much in the way that we did our lockdown with options last year, where, like last year, Kristi scheduled and had a video made, and which we have done this year. I think it's in editing right now. And also had a very specific schedule for trainings and communications with both, with our staff and with parents. So we're following very similar steps that she's developed. Also, some of our next steps are further trainings with our rapid-response teams, which we're scheduling through the fall and early winter. Questions or comments, thoughts about this?
Stacy, go ahead. Just, you know, since you guys have done all this training, and I know the minutes are very important, obviously, if something happened. What's the average, like, time from, say, when a student comes into, like, the reunification to when they're actually with the parent?
It depends on the incident, but it, hours and hours and hours, depending on what happened at the impacted site. If it's a, a gas leak and, and all the students were waiting outside until the buses picked them up and brought them over, it could be four hours, it could be five hours. If it was an incident where there could possibly be some injuries, whether it was an explosion or some violent incident of some sort, what, the impacted site becomes a crime scene, which means that people coming and going are, is really slowed down until the police or say that we can leave. So it could be tens of hours.
You know, I think, oh, go ahead.
I think we're on the same, I think we're on the same, go ahead, I think we're on the same.
I was just going to say too, I mean, when you're talking about transitioning, students waiting at the impacted site, getting on a bus and getting over and getting organized, that is going to take a little time. Once they're there and the parents show up. I mean, it could be, and once you go through the line, they fill out the cards, they check in, it could be ten to fifteen minutes. You know, from the time that they hand their card, there's a runner that gets the student, the student gets reunited with the family, and the family's able to leave. But again, it.
Depends.
And there could be a case where, where we evacuated a site. So if it was a, a gas leak, if we evacuated a site, there were no injuries, we might just bust the kids home normally, you know. We, it may not be a need for a parent reunification. So.
I was going to follow up a little bit on the, I'm going to get the kids. Because I'm thinking about all these kids being there, and somebody says, can you go tell Mrs. so-and-so that I've released their kid to the parents? And that doesn't get communicated, and then all of a sudden, where's the kid? Have, have they gone home or have they not? So is there like a master list or a master person that you go to that? You can only, the kids can only be released through the teacher? Like, where they have the list or something like that or?
Yeah, so an example of the St. Elementary School, where to go to a reunification site, students stay with the classroom teacher or buddy if there's a couple of teachers, and they'll have the rosters there. Each teacher has an emergency roster that's ready to go with them at any given time, whether it's evacuation site or reunification site. And so then the reunifier would come down, the card is sized in different sections, there's a top and a bottom. There's someone there actually doing accounting and keeping track of which students have been picked up and released. They would actually go to that teacher and say, I have so-and-so's mom. They go down, then they take the child, they come up, and there's one last step before the reunifier sends a student off. They ask the child, are you okay to go home with this person? Yes, that's my mom, it's that final check. And so, and then the reunifier signs off the exact time and who they were released with. So there's a multi-step accountability process. But yes, the student is actually picked up from the teacher in the classroom by the reunifier.
And there's an identification process component built in. There's a, a role called checker that, after they fill out the form, they come in to the location, have that ID checked, verified with our student management system in front of campus, and cross-check that before they're even brought to the, before they go down to get the kid.
Okay.
Sorry, Stacy, go ahead.
And then I just, you know, because just thinking, you know, say a high school site, I mean, like, that's a lot of kids. So if it, are, are we using, I mean, are there times that we'd have to have two sites for reunification? And you know what I, you know what I mean?
We have a couple of primary sites identified. We also have some of our local non-school partners who have offered us locations. So we have probably at least four or five different options that, again, these kids are very mobile. And everything's very scalable, whether it's a small situation or a large. And then again, these go-kits are all, Kristi found some great little, carts are all on wheels and very portable. So we could, yeah, it could be a small, if we only have four or five hundred, but if we were to need room for two, three thousand, that would be an option we would be prepared for as well.
So the mobile sites, I mean, I'm just thinking multiple sites, multiple people organizing, like, how big do these groups get? And like, as far as like the checkers and the reunify, and the people, I mean, you have many sites all over, you can get pretty divided.
No.
We would identify one.
More than likely, we have one reunification site.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So no matter the size of the.
Yeah, so if, if, you know, the largest site, obviously, would be the high school, that we would have to re, have a reunification site. But yeah, we would want the whole, all of the students and staff at, at that one site.
Okay, okay.
And now you can see why, again, it was kind of daunting, how are we going to find that many checkers and that many greeters? And that's when, again, Joel McCall said, we'll have eighty people helping you, you know, greet and help park the cars and help with traffic flow, and so have a lot of assistance from our EMS partners as well.
And how quick, like, say we, you know, say an incident happens, how quick can this be launched? I mean, like, within, I'm assuming minutes, but.
To deploy the reunification.
Yeah, like, to, right.
And that's one of the reasons that, that I think, as we talked about this, to make sure that the training, most of the, the staff of the reunification site would be DSC staff. Because in, you know, usually there wouldn't be an emergency at this site, and we aren't responsible for our classroom of teachers, right, our kids, exactly. So we would be able to deploy fairly quickly. Once we got word, you know, that that was going to be something that happened and that we need to set up the reunification site. And then to the, to the point, we'd have a group going to the impacted site and a group going to the reunification site.
Some of the head custodians have been trained already as well.
Again, the overview training that Superin does yet, but who would actually be on site. And so the moment they got word, they could start assembling tables or helping us with the sandwich boards that would be going out, or the caution tape and cones. So we have some people on, at the sites who have, again, had some kind of overview training.
And then, I think, one last thing. For any reason, would we ever be a site for some, like, a non-school? I mean, like, if they're, you know what I mean?
The district serves a site?
No. I'm just saying, like, a building, like, say, something happened somewhere else as far as in the community and where there was a lot of people need, would there be reciprocity for us to?
We are working with the county right now on the, we currently have an agreement of mass dispensing with Scott County. But they're also looking at using our high school site as a, same, same type of deal.
Mass dispensing for it.
That was twice before, is that Kristi updated or something?
Mass dispensing, we, we continue to just update that.
Okay.
And we actually had a long conversation because it's under construction right now. So, you know, if there was something, you know, would we, would we be able to accommodate it as, while we're under construction? So we work with them quite often just to talk through.
Yeah, it was in place for quite a while.
Excuse me?
I thought something like that had been in place for a while.
It has been.
Yeah, mass dispensing.
Mass dispensing, but now we're talking about not so much during school time, but off-school time. If there was like a flood or somewhere that people needed to stay, we're looking at that as well.
Well, a lot of these systems are the same system that you would like use for that. So that's why.
In addition, we've been in collaboration with Aspen and St. Mike's and St. John's. And so, you know, we would also support, should something happen at, at one of their sites, we would be able to support them as well.
You guys said you did a tabletop exercise. What, have you done, you've done one or more than one?
There's, there's been one annually here, but we've done two this year. We did one, we did two on reunification this year. And that's what our most recent one was on, reunification.
Oh, okay, so what was the scenario that was posed during the tabletop?
The scenario was that it was the World Series being held in Minneapolis, and the, and there was a plane that was a private plane coming into the Flying Cloud Airport that crashed at Jeffers Pond Playground. Glendale Playground, yeah. There were some casualties, and, and there was, maybe a, offset reunification.
This is Shakka, Minutawakka, and Sioux, and as we were doing the tabletop, he sat off to the side, Greg Hayes, and he kind of did our Incident Command, like, what it would look like. Because that's not terminology that we're real familiar with. And so he sat there, he kind of identified, okay, this would be your Incident Command, and all those columns in that table, he kind of, as we were talking, there's still some left over, I think, up on the wall. But as we were talking and deciding who would do what, like Jennifer Muller, of course, since it happened at Glendale, she'd be Incident Command until that got handed off. And so that's his whole flow chart. So there was just such a wealth of resources and information for us that day.
Because that's one of the things I was going to ask, is during the tabletops, you go through the different scenarios and the injections, usually the thing that stops the teams is who's in command and what happens if the person that was supposed to be in command was hurt or injured or not there. Do, does everyone have immediate access to the delegated list?
So one of the things that we're doing with our rapid-response teams and with our ICS training is going three-deep. So as we're, you know, identifying, you know, leaders of these different teams, if they're not here, then so-and-so, and if they're not here, then so-and-so. So that's a really important piece, you know, having that.
It's usually the thing that kills people.
Yes, exactly, yes.
What about out-of-band communications? Let's say if, you know, there's a physical disaster and the network's down, the internet's down or something like that. Did you do any of those?
We talked about that as an issue certainly, and one of the things, at least with reunification, is that having the paper copy. So even if we don't have the access to our infinite campus, we can have identification. And if people don't have proper identification, we have the card and take a photo of them with their card. So, yeah, so having paper copy is a really important piece of this.
Any other questions? It's reassuring to hear, and we never have to do it.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Can we move on to policy? We're starting, these are the first reading of some of the one hundredth, I think.
Yeah, if you look at policies 100 through 104, there were no changes to any of those policies. Their exact language from Minnesota School Board Association. So we are, we are recommending no changes to any of those policies. In policy 105, we currently have a policy around the retention of records. And because there's a Minnesota statute about that, we, you know, we have to follow Minnesota statute. We still have the process that the business office owns, but since it's required by law, we are recommending that we remove it from a board policy. So those are the, you know, if you have any specific questions on any of those policies or not.
Can I just clarify that the market's retention would still be a policy, just not one that would be reviewed by the board, right?
It's a statute?
It's a law.
It's a statute, it's a law, so there wouldn't need to be a board policy for it.
How, what documentation do you use internally to make sure you're in?
Statute.
So the policy and procedure actually says how you implement the statute, right? Like if, if you're required to keep records for ten years, then you need to label them as such and then put them in a place where they're retained for ten years. So there, there's gonna be a policy and procedure still internally that you guys are following that helps you implement. Because the statute doesn't tell you how to do it.
So that would be a management policy.
Okay, that's what I was getting at, there's still gonna be more.
It'd be a procedure in lieu of a policy.
Any other questions? If not, please will come back, um, on September twenty, no, wait, twenty-third, no nine, I'm sorry. I'm ahead of myself, September ninth. Okay, superintendent relations, did you have anything?
I do know.
I'll move on to community engagement. Stacy and Michael.
All right, I have a brief handout to pass out and I wish I had done the fancy faded draft across the top of it that I'll pass down this way. And I apologize, my printer shortchanged me. So can you make sure Melissa has one and if you guys each have one? I tried to scale it down to bullet points, but what I'm passing out to you is the first discussion the, um, public engagement and legislative committee had, based on the direction of the school board from the school board retreat that we had. If you recall, we, um, spent that time at Wong's talking about, um, not only our goals and our direction, but also the feedback that we were getting from the community engagement surveys. And so we took a close look at that feedback and talked. And the board made several suggestions to look at how we might better engage our community and perhaps make ourselves more visible in the community. Since there, um, well, it may not always be true, there is a perception that we aren't always visible at activities or in the schools. And so we were given some direction and Enrique was involved in this as well, in Dr. Salo. And we took our notes from that retreat, got together and decided to just, um, start putting out a draft of ideas to address what you asked us to look into. And then to bring it tonight is just a first round to say, did we interpret our notes correctly? Is this what you were giving us direction to do and is there any way we should shape it differently moving forward? So this was just our first attempt. I just wanna point out that, um, a couple of the themes that we looked at is, as we tried to give some context to the notes we had from our retreat was that, looking at our theme this year, relationships matter. Following up on and supporting the work on survey that, survey and work that we're doing with MTSS to keep in mind and consideration the state initiative, reimagine Minnesota, especially in the area of building community bridges and what role we should play. And then acknowledging, um, again, that community input, that some people do perceive that board members are not always present or that involved in the schools and rather just here making votes, you know, voting at meetings. And so we wanted to address that based on your direction. Briefly, we came up with four initial ideas to run by you. The first was the idea of creating more public engagement events. Our initial idea to put out was we would look at doing three events during the next school year. And ideally, we would look at the opportunity to highlight some of our new renovated areas or the ALC, for example. Invite the community members in to see those spaces and then be very intentional in what the purpose of that evening is. In addition to getting them in those spaces and having an opportunity to visit with and hear from the board and the administration, what might, what might be a theme that is relevant in terms of both our role as a board member and, um, a current initiative within the district or a recent activity. So for example, if they were to come to the ALC, and we can revisit the fact that the community came together and supported a referendum effort. And with those funds, here's how, here's one example of how we acted and how those funds were spent to meet the goals that the district has set forth to do this, supported by the direction from the board of directors. So that we're very intentional and it's not just a tour of a public building, but we're really trying to engage our community. Help them, help understand them better, but then help them understand better, you know, what does a board of directors do? And what do we have to do with the reason that there is an ALC, you know? What is our role and what is not our role? So we're looking at doing that. Another idea we came up with is to try and be real intentional in creating, um, some sort of signup list where a board member signs up for at least one activity a month outside of a meeting or a training session where you participate and we kinda just make note of that. In other words, um, we might participate in, maybe there's a board member or a few at Community Fest. Or it could be a sports event, it could be an arts event. It could be going to, for example, the Wonder Projects that we were invited to last spring where we learned about some real student-directed learning and Student Voice. So there's kind of two, two different, you know, some different ways that, that plays up. One, we are trying to get more visible and be active. When we get together and talk about decisions that affect our teachers, for example, we should be kinda more boots on the ground and seeing what's happening with the teachers' work with their students. In an exciting way, right? Let's see what's hard and let's see what's great. Or if we're at a football game or a band concert or freshman orientation. And then the other thing is when we get together in a group like this in a limited time and we're voting on some big governance decisions, it's a little bit easier to understand if we've been real active in those ways and can come together and share with each other. So that was, um, one idea. And what we would do if we did pursue this is we would set up a central scheduling area, maybe through a signup genius. We'd have a list of events that are available and certainly could go beyond that. And people could just kinda sign up so that then we could, um, let the appropriate administrative team and teachers know that one of us would be participating. So it wasn't like, oh surprise, board member showed up in the third grade math room and, and is here to observe today. So we'd be real, real careful about that as well. And we would, um, also ask for invitations, you know, be real clear. Let's be real clear with the, the admin team or the counselors or, or the, the instructors and say, is there something going on where you'd like a board member to come see what it's like? We'd, we'd be looking for those invites. The next one we talked about is finding some way that's not adding to the deluge of information that our families get and the general public, to just sort of update them on our board work. Number one, there is sometimes confusion in the community about what the role of the school board is. How is that different from city council? How is that different, you know, from different boards that people serve on? What do we do and what do we not do and where's that confusion? But also to say, even if it is just a misperception, we are in the building doing things. So if, if we're, some of us are at freshman orientation or went to a training session or at Community Fest, perhaps one option is we work with Christie and say, you know, at the end of every district newsletter that goes out, let's just have a small board highlight, you know? Here's, here's a couple photos and just a brief mention of who is where and what they were doing. Again, we don't wanna add more communication, but we also wanna say, no, you don't necessarily know who we are. You don't know if we're in the buildings, but here we are. Here's a photo of so-and-so, you know, on the floor with the second graders when they're doing any STEM project. Or, um, you know, at a state, um, band competition, whatever. Just something that starts to keep continually getting the message out there that, that we're trying to get in those spaces so that we are aware of those things when we come back together. Finally, we talked about how could we use something already in place and become more engaged, um, with, with our administrative teams, with our teachers and with our schools. And so we talked about taking that component of our monthly meeting with the superintendent. And some of us tried this out last spring. And perhaps moving that monthly meeting from the, you know, district service center to one of the school buildings. And it would be sort of two-part. First of all, we would work with that administrator at the building and ask for a space to get together and have that one-on-one discussion. And it could be one-on-one or two or three of us could go, right, to be sensitive to Dr. Salo's timing. And then the second part would be in working with that administrator, either walking through, seeing some unique teaching things, strategies, implementations in the school, or just a more general tour. But to really be going through those buildings and use that time in our conversations with the superintendent to look at what's really happening. I just feel, the few times that we tried it last year, and I think some of you have done it as well, it just gave a whole new depth to those one-on-one meetings. And since that's something we already have in place, it would be, would not be extra time on the board's part, but it would make us more visible and it would really help, again, underscore relationships matter. It's a lot easier to sit around this table if I've spoken to the teachers or the counselors or the admin team and I've seen what works and what doesn't work and, and that they know we care and that the students know we care, even if they don't know who we are and the parents know we're in the buildings when we're there. So we're really trying to look at that theme, take the notes that you gave us at the meeting. We all brought, you know, our own notes from the retreat and say, is this what you were kinda directing us to do? Are we going in the right direction and how else would you like us to shape this work? Cause this falls under our committee. What did I miss?
I think we did talk quite a bit at the retreat about going back to the way it was a few years ago where one board member was assigned to a school. And then we would show that and we would swap what happened to that idea.
If I recall correctly, at the retreat, we decided that there were advantages and disadvantages to that. We weren't going to go back to that and that in making decisions, it was better if we got into different schools at different times and also got to different events. So we were going to high school events and we might be going to an elementary choir concert just to be well-rounded. I think that, if I understand correctly, and I wasn't here when you did it that way, but there's sometimes the disadvantages. You become the go-to for any, you know, you're the one magnet for the, any issues at that school. People who did it before, I, and I think we talked about at the retreat that it wasn't the direction we wanted to go. Am I remembering correctly?
You remember that, yeah. There was some discussion on it, but there was no consensus that I remember that, that we do that.
Yeah.
I think there's positives to it as well.
Yeah. There's negatives. That's what I remember, we talked about both sides, yeah.
Become an advocate for one school and really use it on the school board for all.
Yeah.
That's what you rotate, that's what we were talking about. And most school governors should obviously know that they are not the go-to person to send somebody to who works in charge of that department. But in practice, it did happen that they felt that, well, you're my representative. That's how they start every conversation from our school. So they did, they did do that.
Yeah, I think, I think the challenge was less, less with the board member and more with the perception from the constituents at the school.
And just in terms of governance, we were looking at ways to get us involved E through twelve. And in the classroom and extracurricular, right? Let's, cause our learning doesn't stop, as we know, at three o'clock or whatever time each school gets out. And so that's what we're looking at. And, and it's probably what we all do anyway, but the perception is that we're not as involved, I think, as we are. And so let's take that opportunity to be intentional about it. And let's find a way to capture that and kinda keep getting the message out there.
I guess, um, I recall that we talked a little bit more about communication from the school board to the community.
Right.
And, um, I'm all for holding, hosting events and having the community come. But the reality is, the community doesn't always come.
Exactly.
We need to go where they are or we need to reach them in a different way. Whether it's, um, the newspaper or the, you know, through some type of technology, um, social media, whatever. I think it's great to do that stuff, but I feel it's really important that we need to be able to communicate to the community on their turf, so to speak.
Right.
And, um, you know, I still think it's important to try to explain the role of the board.
I agree.
How open enrollment works, it's a confusing thing. And you gotta be careful of the terminology, like, you know, we were talking earlier. While we're down, you know, we're down so many kids, well, no, we're up a hundred and fifty, but our budget is different. So I, you know, I had a, I had a conversation on that very topic this past weekend, I didn't understand that. So I think we need to have that kinda communication. You know, whatever we can touch on, the school finance would be, I think is important too. And I don't really see that in here unless you're talking about hosting.
No, we, we-
And I still think hosting is gonna be really hard to get people there.
Well, that's why, so we did talk about the newspaper at our meeting. And we did talk about should there be a record, recurring, you know, board member editorial or something where we get that information out. And it, it became, yeah, we didn't know if that was helpful or not helpful.
Well, it doesn't have to be luxury. I mean, it's like, you know, it could be articles, school finance one oh one. This is what it is, they can choose to read it or not, but we're putting it out there.
Sure.
Sounds like something that might be on our, on our website.
Pardon?
Truthfully, sounds like something that might be on our website, truthfully.
Right.
A lot of community members won't go to our website, I see what you're saying.
You know, but we, but we also have Christie-
The interest.
I guess we shouldn't all talk at once, I apologize. But like Christie sends out, it used to be key communicators, I don't know what you call it now, it's got a different name.
Yeah, we still have that.
Okay. That's something that goes out to people. I don't have to pull anything up, it's coming to me.
Right.
It's about as passive as you can get to me, that I can read if I want to. I think, you know, you're right, a lot of people won't look at our website. One of the things we did talk about is coming into the turf, particularly of the parents for, for elementary and middle school. A lot of them will come back and say, the only place they look is on Schoology or on Seesaw or something like that. So what if we took our communication, not added extra work for the, for the middle schools or the elementary schools, but actually take that communication and put that in that, in that site? And I think that'd be great for the parents who put the community members and don't have that, so do both. Right, that's what, that's what we kinda talked about. But that also helped too, because I mean, you know, that last strategic session we had, I can't tell you how many people came with me and said, I had no idea people were supposed to go to that. They really thought it was supposed to be a board thing and, and all that, they, they didn't know.
That's too bad, yeah.
And, um, yeah, so I mean, um, so the, the people that are, happen to be involved or those that are openly communicated to even directly because they know somebody on the board or they know Terry or something like that, uh, they tend to show up at a lot of these. But everyone else doesn't know about it. Now, granted, it was the day after Halloween, so you had a lot of parents making up for the time.
That was communicated really, really broadly. The date, the date perhaps was a conflict, but I think there's, I mean, I don't, I know the number of places that we communicated that date, cause our goal was, let's invite all, you know?
I get it, but there's, I, it's, it's about bringing, like, I think you said it busily when you said, into their turf, so to speak. And, um, you know, I mean, not a lot of people go to the district website. They go to what is only interested for them and their particular circumstance. So for example, a lot of my friends are in pinespers, their kids are long gone from school. So they get the communication that Christie sends out because it comes to them.
Right.
It was advertised on that. I talked to some of my friends about it, they decided they didn't need to be involved. Well, that's fine, as long as you know about it, it's your choice. So I, I just think we need to look at all those different avenues for it.
We did, we did give Christie a heads up that we'd like to explore some of those options. I didn't want her to hear us discussing it tonight and think that we were burying her in new work or something. But we talked about, in the communications that do go out to the community and to our parents, is there a small place where it does, separate maybe from a, a few stories in the paper where it's like, you know, let's review what is the role of a board member, how does finance work? Sort of a, in a very approachable way, I agree. But also, how do we increase the frequency of the message? That we are here, here's what we do, here's how we handle this. And so if that's the district email that comes on my site and I scroll through it, I don't know how, I mean, we have, we got data recently from Merkis on how people use technology, Seesaw, Schoology, et cetera. We can go back, we have some of that data, we know how people use it. You know, is there a way to integrate in there? So it, it is kind of a, I guess it's gonna be sort of a trial basis, but we talked a little bit about the newspaper thing. Is that the way to go or not and who, who opens that?
And the message can be the same, it, it doesn't have to be a different-
I agree, the thing is, how many places can we get it out?
I agree with you.
And short.
Yeah.
People look at the long, like the email.
That's, that's why we're thinking it's, it's a photo or two also. You know, it's just, it's a visual and, and a few bullet points, um, separate from maybe, you know, let's review what finances or, you know, those things. So it is two-part, A, let's see us involved in community, two, how can we educate it? If, if you go on social media, people have very different perceptions of what a school board does, you know? And so you're right, there is a need to understand that and what our role is, so.
I have a general question for, um, for the facilities. If we were to move this meeting to, let's say, other buildings, is there gonna be a logistical challenge? Cause it has to be recorded, we have to have, you know, space for people to sit, is, is, are there concerns there?
I'd have to defer the tech on that.
Not the board meetings.
For study sessions, actually that's funny, cause we talked, we talked about that on the tour today. For study sessions, we would need this. We just have to be sure we didn't go in, we didn't go into a, a regular board meeting, cause then we'd want it televised. But actually, that's, that's one of the things we talked about when we were both at the Edgewood, Westwood and Bridges. We just said, maybe that's something we could try for a study session into those spaces and invite people, you know, into them.
Are there any type of statutory requirements about how the, the big the room has to be or anything like that? Is there, do I have to-
I don't, we don't.
It's just a post, it's a post, it's a, well in advance.
Yep.
Our community is so small that if they want to come to a study session, look, I'm right here.
It would be an advantage to highlight the, the spaces if we wanted to do that. I guess that would be the thing.
Yeah.
I think the, I, I can't speak for principals or anything like that, but I would think that they would be happy to show up to school a little bit. I don't know what goes on over there, but.
We're hosting a rotary meeting at Bridges later this fall. You know, a chance to.
Yeah, I could see it for the broader community. That would make sense. So, I, what I heard was, I echoed exactly what Lee said about the clarity around the community. And maybe using some of the electronic technology to, to do that with the website. Secondly, I heard mention of school board directors popping into third grade math classrooms. We can't do that, obviously. But it sounds like, and again, with Community Fest, we go to Community Fest already. We'd be one in a thousand or two thousand people there. People aren't gonna be able to find us. It's, it sounds like we're looking for photo ops. And we don't need that photo ops when it comes to the question of the job of a school board director with board governance, with overseeing the supervi, superintendent, with overseeing policymaking and approving budgets and school finance. I don't think that looking for the photo ops and that sort of thing is gonna be a priority.
The only reason we said photo was just to catch people's attention and list what we were doing. So, yes, Community Fest, we can go, a couple of people can go stand by the school district, you know, table. And I wasn't talking, I was saying we wouldn't just pop into a third grade teacher's classroom unannounced. We would go on.
But we can go to it, we could go.
Right. What I'm saying is, right, this should all be very intentional, very upfront, building relationship. And then for those who think, do you remember from the engagement survey? Well, the school boards never had any events. I don't know who they even are. I never see them in the schools when I'm there with my kids. And, and to say, you know, we are. Most of us are trying to get in there and learn those things. So, that was where we felt the direction was. I think you're right, we have to revisit maybe the larger community and, and how to partner with Christie. Because we did, we did start to have that discussion a little bit. And I don't think this is about photo ops. That's not where my energy is coming from and it wasn't from anybody else's energy in that room. It was looking back at our notes that said, how can we engage our students, our teachers, our administrators? And, and be a little more savvy when we come together about what's really happening. You know, if we're voting on computers, let's understand how they're used in the classroom. Let's be in there observing and asking questions. If we're talking about student voice and choice, let's go in and hear how a sixth grader puts together an entire public presentation and does the media and then be able to speak to that. That's what we're talking about. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is not about a photo op. This is about, if we're going to do that, then let's just let the community know. We're kind of, we're in there. We want to be in schools. We want to say to the teachers, invite us in if you're comfortable.
Well, I think with the larger events, like, you're right, if I go up to Community Fest and walk around.
Right.
Unless I'm carrying a sign, I'm on the school board. You know, they're not gonna notice.
We're not doing those things.
But, right, I guess my thought was that when we do have some of these events, that we actually maybe have a table.
Yep.
The school board, ask those questions, you know, casually, just in a more casual environment, I should say.
Yeah.
You know, where they can ask questions about what something's about or, or we can hand out information, whatever. So, that's what I see it as. I don't see it as a photo op, but the reality is, people want to know that we're in buildings. So, somehow we have to tell them.
Yeah.
If I go to an elementary school concert and the principal acknowledges that we have a school board member here, I don't really want to be acknowledged for that, I really don't.
Right.
However, it's super important to the parents that they know that the school board cared to come. So, it's kind of a catch twenty-two. I mean, you do or you don't. So, I, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying and I know how I feel when I go to these events.
Yep.
But parents want to know that, that we are in the schools. We even talked about it. They don't have to say my name or anything, you know? And I don't need to be patted on the back that I'm there. But they want it, they want to have it acknowledged from the surveys, they're saying. They want to know if the school board even knows what goes going on in the schools. I think that was one of the comments.
Well, yeah, we're there. We didn't make this up. I mean, we pulled this from this, that discussion that we had. So, the, the main thing tonight is, we just got the ball rolling. You help us know if we're on the right track and how we can refine this before we come back with another draft of ideas. Obviously, we've got a couple of points to, to pull up. We even talked about a way to identify ourselves, you know? I mean, yes, we have these little teeny, you know, name tags, right? But who's going to know, and you know, is it something as nice as a shirt that says, you know, PLSA is School Board, Relationships Matter? That simple. I mean, is there something? Because if I'm in the football stands and I'm cheering when the band's marching on the field or the touchdown is made, I'm just another mom in the crowd. But I also am seeing what's happening in our community.
Well, I'll use the example this morning. If there weren't any board members there this morning and/or you didn't acknowledge that we were there and no one saw we were sitting.
Right.
I'm fairly sure we would have had a number of staff that would say, "Well, why did the school board come to our kickoff this morning?" I mean, so, you have to have it acknowledged so they can say, "Well, I don't remember who it was, but I know there were school board members over there." I mean, Sean, would you agree?
Absolutely.
I mean, when we went to the training earlier, to the Shrecky Holly training, Dr. Stallow said there are some school board members in the audience going through this training as well today. It's not for a photo op, it's just to say we're trying to learn.
There has to be a happy medium though, because you don't want to interrupt it. You don't want to make it into about the school board.
No.
Like, because I agree with you, I don't like being called out when I go to those things. I, I just want to be there to help or to, you know, cheer on the team or whatever. I don't necessarily like being called out. And I remember I went to the, the art fair and, and somebody at the table went, "Oh, my gosh, a school board member's here." You know, that, I just want, I'm just here to see the art and meet the kids and do whatever, you know? And I don't want anything changed because.
No, and I'm not asking for that. But there are times when, just to say it, don't have to call an email or anything. But people want to know that. I mean, you can stand in the right area, they don't always want to be there. So, there is a balance.
Right.
And you know, if you go to a classroom, I really don't want the teacher to stop teaching while I'm standing there watching.
No, but I have had teachers say, "Will you come to the classrooms? Do you want us? Yes, okay, then let's work something out."
Well, I've been at a classroom door and looking and they'll say, "Oh, come in, we want to show you this, we want to show you that."
Yeah.
That's their choice.
Yep.
But no, I didn't come to do that.
Right.
So, how can we be more present in the schools without having some pomp and circumstance around it? Should I have been? Is that an idea?
Yes. No, it's, it's, I don't know. No, it's okay. Quickly, I think to answer that question, I think the best way for that to happen is when we are connecting with you on a monthly basis, to be going to different buildings. Because it's not pomp, it's not circumstance, it's being there. And people will see us, we will be visible. And I do think at events.
Why does connecting with the superintendent have to do with going into the schools? And no offense to Terry, but why, why? See, because when I've asked to go to school, but then everyone wants to meet there. Terry, you've wanted to come down, the principal, the whole bit, and it becomes this large tour. People have jobs, you know, every day. If you want to come into a school to see something, why does it have to be this large production?
I guess to me, our plan is for when we are going to have a monthly sit-down for a half an hour. To have that happen in one of the buildings, not here. So, that's not intended to be disruptive of what's going on in that building. What's going on in that building will continue to go on. We will be present if people see us and would like to engage. It can be casual engagement, it does not need to be a dog and pony show where we're getting trotted around the building on a, on a tour.
Right. So, how can we do that without having to schedule the half-hour meeting? I mean, it just to do that.
What are you, what meeting do you?
Can we do that on a regular basis?
Well, you meet Dr. Stallow every month. We're saying for that, meet her in a school building instead of at the DSC.
Okay, let's take that option out and talk about how we can be in the school buildings without having to combine it with the meeting.
We don't need to.
Why not?
So, for example, did you get, last spring, we all got invited to come hear the sixth grade wonder projects to talk about student, you know, to observe student record, several days of it. I went to three of the four, I think. And nobody, nobody was aware that we were even board members sitting there. I think some recognized Dr. Stallow, but it was full of parents as well who were there. And we got to experience, I got to engage with the teacher afterward. I sent a follow-up email, talked about how I could now see the connection to personalized learning much more accurately. And nothing was made of that. That wasn't a meeting, nobody else had to be there. She happened to be there one of the times that I went and signed in separately. On, we were all on that invite list, but I, I don't know how that, that's sort of what we're envisioning. It's not having a meeting or having it called out. What we're looking for is, on a regular basis, I mean.
I think.
I, I think we're confusing. We're not talking about creating a event.
Our role is to be in the classroom and to be observing all these things. I mean, when we need to make a, make a decision on a computer system, we're hearing, recreating the information on it. I mean, I'm not gonna be ten thousand times more informed just because I went to see the school projects one night. And the parents aren't gonna know that we're there. It's gonna go right over their heads. And so, I mean, our job is board governance and to be able to have the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, bring the right people in the room at our study session so that we can make the best decisions possible to float the district.
And not talking about management. We were just talking about how to be more engaged and.
We've been asked to be more visible in the community.
Yep.
All the surveys want us to be more visible in the community, whether it's staff saying it or parents saying it.
Yep.
And so, I think the task was, how can we be more visible? And I think when you have your monthly meeting with Dr. Stallow, for me, it's kind of like doing two things at once.
Exactly.
I can have my meeting in a, in a conference room there and I can walk around. And it's, it's not ever, I've never felt like it was a dog and pony show or that they stopped education when we went. And it wasn't a big thing. I mean, and, you know, just like the projects you were talking about last spring.
Right.
You know, we were, the Fab Lab had their thing.
Yep.
We all went to that. We were at Men Capes, I believe you were there too. Not a big thing, you're just.
We are invited.
Mixing in with everyone else.
Exactly.
It's presence.
It's a presence.
You're always gonna have the parents that are gonna say, "We don't see the school board."
Of course.
That's true.
Absolutely.
Right.
There are, there's always gonna be some of those.
You're never gonna not have a comment made, probably.
No.
Right.
We're not gonna always make everybody happy, but.
But we're also trying to respond to what they told us.
We can still try to be more visible.
So, so if I could try to tie some kind of ribbon on a lot of this. I, I, when I, when I stuck my hand up a minute ago, it was good to say, "We asked you guys to do this work."
Right.
So, thank you to the two of you and Enrique. My first reactions to the things that are on here is, I would potentially say, the idea of public engagement events and ongoing updates to the public about board member involvement. I just think, simplify, kind of turn those into one bullet point.
Okay.
Would be, would be a thought. I think everybody in here has made good points about the challenges, because there are challenges. We have a lot of parents, and there's six, not even here. You know, I mean, it's, it's, that's the way it works. That's, that's just kind of how it works. And to Melissa's point, I think it's critical that it's not perceived as us showing up for a photo op. And that is not about.
Or management.
And that's not about whether or not we go or whether or not we do or whether or not we're called out. That literally, people are gonna know if I showed up for a photo op by what I do when I'm there.
Yep.
If, if I'm, people know that. Everybody knows when you're sincere and you're genuine. I think it's a very good point. I think you're a hundred percent right. We can't be showing up for photo ops. That's not our role. I do think it's helpful for us in governance, in our governance role. For those of us who have the time and the ability to spend some time in buildings, I think it's great. I think it's gonna be helpful. For tho, we're seven individuals, we don't all have to be managing our role as a board member the exact same way.
Right. Right, because it's not, we're different, right.
We're supposed to be different.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So, is that as clear as mud for you guys?
Well, I mean, I just think for future direction, I don't, well, much different, we're gonna do it, to be honest. I mean, I, you know, I think.
The communication part? I say it's an and, 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 and within whatever we can manage.
Yeah.
How many ways can we get the information?
It's electronic, it's social, it's, it's, are, are there ways to be proactive? Are there ways to have the things, the same messages be places that people are already going? Things they're already receiving.
And our messaging would need to be clear. We don't want to be in the classrooms because we want to manage what the teachers are doing, right? So, I've had teachers say to me, "Thank goodness you didn't come up to third floor when you were here visiting because the kids were a riot. They were crazy today." And I said, "I'm not coming to see a perfect classroom. I'm coming to see what it's like every day. I'm not here to judge." Because resources, right? We vote on resources, we vote on all those things. So, we, we'd have to also work with other people, you know, to say, what is comfortable? Who wants to invite us in? And, and let us just participate. We're, we want to see it all. And we're not trying to make more work. We're just trying to take some of those comments and that feedback and shape it. So, yeah. We can give it another run and try and clarify. We can visit with Christie a little more and other admin.
Communication piece.
So, I think that's something we all agree on, is the communication piece. So, we talked about that right from the get-go. So, to have something like that.
Yep.
So, on our boards thing.
So, Eva, I was gonna ask you, are we gonna break these down into something we actually make decisions on at some point? Or do we just, or is this?
You mean our direction, whatever direction we want to go with this?
Right.
Yeah, I believe we should. I mean, it'd be nice to have buy-in from everybody that they want to do all or at least some parts of what, what are being proposed. I mean, we had now two pretty good discussions on it, actually. But if you would just take what we've all mentioned to heart and maybe come back with.
There is one thing I'd like to ask though, because some of this is a little bit out of our control. So, if we did want to take the meetings, let's say, the study, was that Thunder?
You want yourself.
If we did want to take, let's say, the study sessions and move them into the schools, we would definitely want to have somebody reach out to the principals and the schedules and things like that and make sure that before we decided to do that, that we actually had buy-in. Because I think we should speak on their behalf.
Right. Right.
And that's one thing that I am in favor of, but I wanna make sure that, and not.
Is everybody else in favor of that? Is everybody else in favor of trying to, I mean, maybe we do it once this fall, take one of the study sessions and see if we can, just to see.
Just so that we can say we did it in the building?
Well, just to see how it goes, if it's something that's received or, you know, I don't know.
I like the idea of highlighting what's happening in the schools and also all the new construction and stuff like that, I really do. I think that by us being there, I think it, I, I, I think that shows a little bit more engagement and, and, but I wanna make sure that it's okay with the actual facilities because they have their schedules, they have room stuff, I mean, you've got it, like Jeff said, you gotta leave the door open. I don't wanna be presumptuous.
No, I think we would leave it up to Terry, you know, figure out what.
Cause she knows, will tell us.
Oh, yeah, right, what day is available, I mean, we could try one this fall at some point.
Whatever, everybody be comfortable with that.
I, I would for sure.
Yeah, okay, all right, we'll do that. And then if you just wanna look at this again and bring it back, I think you did a great job trying to synthesize, you know, hurting all of us into a document. So thank you for doing that, and we'll just keep working on it.
Well, this is really what's happened here, all of our discussion, yeah.
I guess I didn't say discussion.
No.
Thank you, thanks.
Well, and then just, you know, moving forward, as I said, it's like springtime, I think the intention for this is to start to have it more engaged with what's happening at the legislature and public engagement. And having actually more of the public engagement legislators on our behalf is, I think, wonderful, so. Well, I think the message, and the message here is that we have, you know, to keep communicating, keep involved with, yeah, our schools and the staff, students. Okay, moving on, informational items.
You know what, just, just because I read an email before I came in and it kind of, I think it talks about community and community bridges, I will forward this invitation or this information to you, but the city of Savage, Savage Police are hosting an event, a communication conversation on race, on, I think I spoke to it earlier, but I've got some details here, I'll share with you. It's September twenty-sixth, from six-thirty to eight-thirty at McCall Pond at the ELC. And it just, the goal, it looks like here, again, Savage Police are gonna be facilitating it to explore issues related to race in our community, hear from community members as they share their personal experiences, explore issues and impacts of race in small groups, share ideas and discuss how to keep the conversation going after the event. So, I'll share this in case anybody wants to, I know I'll also be sharing it with our administrative team, I'm unable to go to that. I think Jeff's going to, I've got an event where I'm joining some scale members at Hemington County, I believe, but.
Is this related to the one that was holding for us, well, too?
I think it is, Mary, when I talked to, when I talked to the mayor, when the mayor met with us, I think she said it is, it, it is. And I think it's called Community Conversations on Race, I know in Oseo, YMC, I think, I think the model may come from either the YMCA or the YWCA. I know when I was in Oseo, we did one as well. So, I think they're just gonna explore it and see what happens and, you know, see what we can learn from it and see if Prior Lake does anything like it and.
Great.
So I, I will forward this information to you.
Thank you.
Any other informational items that needed to share in the session? We have no one that signed up for public forum, but is there anyone in the audience that wants to address the board on what we talked about tonight? Okay, then we're done with the work session and we have a brief board meeting.